I'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovich, Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelzling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw, you have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. So we'll ask if there's anybody who wants to speak to any non-agenda item. Yes, go ahead, come up. Start, state your name and address, Lee. Yeah.
E. Carey, 5711 North Crestwood Boulevard. I just wanted to put in a second request for the boulevards to be trimmed on Crestwood. They, they came and trimmed up the trees so that the drivers could see the stop signs, which they sometimes pay attention to. But you can't pull out without committing to being in the boulevard because of the overgrowth. So just second request to have it done, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, so we did have a couple of questions from members of the council about the, some of the road construction issues and some of the delays that have happened with the widening of I-43, as well as Port Washington and Gene Nicolay. This agenda had already gone public, so there wasn't an opportunity to amend the agenda to include like a formal presentation. However, some members of the DOT were available tonight to come and in public comment, at least tell us sort of where things are and give us a brief timeline. And if the council wishes, they said they'd be happy to come back with a PowerPoint, a more detailed presentation at some point at a future meeting when we can make sure that that's noticed to the public. But we do have a public comment portion. None of this is on the agenda tonight, so it is the one time that they're able to speak about a non-agenda item. So, Mr. Warwick, is there anything you wanted to add before you introduce the folks from the DOT?
No, that should be good.
Okay. All right, um, I don't remember the names of everybody who was on the email, so I will let you introduce yourselves, so.
Very good. I'm Jay Ombra. I'm the DOT Construction Supervisor for the I-43. I got Jeremy Napolocki with me. He's the Construction Leader. He's with a consultant that we hired to lead the project. I think you've met Thomas Erdman, our Construction PM. He's on vacation.
I'll need you to lean forward and speak into the mic, otherwise the folks on the Zoom don't hear you and the, the recording doesn't capture you.
And I've got Tony Keegan here with me and Keegan Dole. They're both with our traffic team. Rachel Angel, our P.I. is also on vacation, so she would have been here as well, so. So they're the people you need to know. I'm the supervisor, but I'm not on the job day to day. They are the team that are out here every day. So I will turn it over to Jeremy to give you the details and answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you just pull the mic over, just make sure you speak into it.
So I wanted to give you some updates on your local streets. Obviously, that's the most important and most impactful to you. And then I'll follow up with an update on the remaining portions of the project. So first off, the remaining work on Port Washington Road consists of construction of the median islands that are both one north of Bender and the other south of Bender on Port Washington Road, which also will entail installation of electrical components and signal components. There's going to be a new light on the, on the north median island and two new lights on the south median island. So sawing for the median island removals have been completed. Anticipate in the next couple of days that the removals there will commence. And then after those islands are completed, which will also involve concrete contractor coming in to install the curb and gutter and concrete sidewalk within those. So once all of that is completed, then the contractor will put the final list, lift of asphalt on the northbound and southbound lanes of Port Washington. You know, essentially from Bender all the way up to Coventry are north project limits. And then once that is complete, the final pavement markings and permanent signage will be installed as well as the, the permanent signals, the new permanent signal at Clovernook, as well as the new signal at Bender and Port. So right now, we're anticipating that that work would be completed within the next five to six weeks. On Gene Nicolay Road, Gene Nicolay Road has been segmented up into three separate segments. The first pretty well complete from Bender up to Brentwood. And now last week, we closed a section from the south high school driveway up to Green Tree for reconstruction of that area. So the goal there is to have that reconstruction completed prior to the school resuming in the fall, so right around Labor Day. Once that northern section is open, we would then go ahead and close that center segment from Brentwood up to that southern school driveway for full reconstruction. As far as other work that is going on concurrently here and, and taking up and utilizing a lot of our contractors' resources, we have construction of the first diverging diamond interchange in southeast Wisconsin, so that's exciting. Currently, they're working on the median on Brown Deer Road, east of the freeway up to Port Washington Road. And then in approximately a month, all traffic will be shifted to the new eastbound lanes while contractor reconstructs all of the westbound lanes. So a new configuration over there, very challenging construction and sequencing operations. You may have noticed here, but last week, Wednesday night into Thursday morning, we reopened the southbound exit and entrance ramp to and from Brown Deer Road. That was to help accommodate busing and another use of the park and ride up there for Summer Fest, so a goal that we were able to achieve. Otherwise, we do have the, the new southbound lanes have been paved from the north project limit, so just north of Brown Deer up to Brown Deer Road. And then again, from the Brown Deer entrance ramp up to Indian Creek, and then grading operations continue south of Indian Creek. We, so and then in preparation for our next mainline traffic switch, paving on I-90 or I-43 northbound from Bender up to just north of Good Hope Road has been taking place the last few weeks. So that in conjunction with our, our new barrier wall, and we have some lighting components and other sign bases as well. That is on our critical path and we need to finish those operations and prior to switching traffic. So once we do switch, which is anticipated to be around July 1st, then we would be able to have the southbound lanes free and clear for reconstruction, which would also help out the construction on Gene Nicolay Road under Green Tree Road. Because now essentially this whole south end of the project from Bender all the way up to Good Hope is so tight. There's, there's a lot of, of different activity going on there. Obviously, we're expanding the freeway and expanding Port Washington Road, but we're also putting a new alignment on Gene Nicolay Road and providing a new sidewalk. So there are retaining walls that require proper sequencing. We do have soldier pile walls, M.S.E. walls, we have tiebacks. So there's, there's a lot of work that hinges on getting this mainline switch in, so contractor has been putting a lot of efforts toward that. So I mean, essentially, you know, we have a $200 million project that we're undertaking that, you know, involves an immense amount of work. But, you know, we do, we are on track and we are maintaining our schedule here, so I guess that's the, the biggest updates that I can provide at this time, so I don't know if there's any questions.
Let me go hard.
So I don't know if you've ever driven on North Port Washington Road, usually around rush hour. If you get, travel north on 43, get off at Silver Spring, travel north on Port Washington Road, you encounter a backup going into Bender Road, sometimes goes back as far as the Bay Shore Mall, okay? And that's a problem. It's a problem for all those businesses on the east end of Port Washington Road. Getting in and out of those businesses, you've got a line of standing traffic. And, and plus you just, it takes a long time to get through the intersection. I know that just the other day, someone was telling me they left at 2:00 in the afternoon going southbound on Port Washington Road and had to wait through two light cycles at Port Washington Road and Bender going south. There's a big scream of cars. We were told, I was told, that this intersection would be done in late May or early June. Here we are, it's June 24th and it's not done. Can you tell me why it's not, it's not completed yet?
I think, as I mentioned before, there is, there's a lot of sequencing that has to take place as part of this huge project. And, you know, a lot of that work is contingent on other sections of, you know, the roadway being completed as well. So just because it, you know, may appear that Port Washington Road is a straightforward reconstruction, you know, there are elements that are on the freeway that have to be completed prior to being able to finish Port Washington Road. So, you know, could we have completed the, the work on Port Washington prior to and then take a chance that, you know, contractor would not damage curb and gutter and other elements? Yes, but, you know, ultimately, we're looking to, to leave you guys with a really quality product and we want to make sure that, you know, you're not going to have any future maintenance issues and things of that nature, so I, you know, the other fact too is that it's the contractor's critical path. And, you know, it doesn't run through Port Washington, and I know, I mean, we're not trying to inconvenience one, anyone whatsoever. So I, you know, I think we have a plan in place that, you know, in the next five to six weeks that, you know, a lot of these issues will be alleviated. I, you know, in Jan, December or January, I think we had changed the signal timings to, you know, alleviate a lot of those backups on Port Washington Road. So we have maximized the green time for that north-south movement and then also allowing time for the east-west movements as well. You know, I, I drive through that area at least once or twice, if not three times a day. I think since the signal timings have changed, I haven't, you know, sat in, in more than one cycle. And, you know, I, it's unfortunate if you have, I, but, you know, I think this will all be coming to an end shortly.
Well, the other problem is now that the, the north end of Gene Nicolay is closed, all that traffic has to travel south and then get onto Port Washington Road. So now there's backups traveling north, well, going east on Bender and then north on Port Washington Road. Sometimes I, I myself have gotten into a situation where I can't get out from Gene Nicolay onto Bender because there's a backup of, of cars there. And so that's all part of the problem here. Can you tell me what is it about the I-43 project that needs to be done so that you can get this project done in the next five weeks?
The traffic switch on mainline is the critical path. So we need to have those contractors concentrate on getting the rest of the northbound lanes and shoulders paved and then the new barrier wall installed and other components that go along with it. And then switch and then we'll be able to alleviate, you know, the, we'll have our, our grading contractor working on the, the southbound lanes, which would open up opportunity for their subcontractors and the concrete contractors and electrical subs to be able to get back to Port Washington Road.
We're actually working at an intersection buying or something.
There, there's a lot going on everywhere.
But I mean, that particular intersection had been untouched for a while and it looked like you actually had started something today.
So I, I did talk to our prime contractor. They expect to be back in there either tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday to start those removals on that median. You know, there, it may not have appeared that there was work going on there, but there's, you know, in that northwest corner where that new barrier wall wraps around the corner. You know, that was a, a very difficult area. There's a tremendous amount of utilities in that area and, you know, which honestly comes back to, you know, the, the reason that the, the Bender was delayed in opening in the first place. We, we came upon so many different challenges with utilities. And, you know, we, we did our best to mitigate, you know, those issues and that could have been a six-month process. But we, we mitigated it to, you know, do some redesign and some other things and working with everybody, you know, all parties to expedite as much as we could.
So we do meet every week. Our traffic team here meets with law enforcement and the fire. I think we meet with the captain and sorry, we don't recognize. So, so we meet every week with them and they have an opportunity if they see any with the, the flow of traffic or complaints, you know, other than when there's been a larger accident on the freeway. Like I think last week, Thursday, there was a, a shooting on the freeway that backed up every. So I know accidents on Washington backed up things. So work every week with law enforcement, fire, we're willing to adjust the signals. If we hear a complaint, let us know. We haven't been getting them. Our P.I. team reaches out regularly with the businesses on there about the driveways. Since last November and December, you know, we've got a very good relationship with them. They haven't been calling us. So if you hear something, let us know. We're here, we'll react, so.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. I know we weren't noticed for a report from the DOT tonight, but thank you for speaking during public comment, just to let us know where things are. I think Carl will work with you on getting the more formal reports. We can see the slides and all that stuff, so at a future meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, we move on to the consent agenda. There is actually an addition to monthly reports. So before we do the consent agenda, Carl, do you want to explain the addition to the monthly reports?
Yeah, I will do that. So I'll bring up Jalen Lee. She is our finance manager. On everybody's podium is a new report that will be added to the council packet, which is the monthly financial report. It includes a number of items on here and, and don't be alarmed, the, the first item, it says year-to-date revenue, $2 million in the general fund. That is somewhat true, but it's not. So when we give these to you guys on a monthly basis, that number will not include property taxes until we've made payments to the taxing districts, which includes, which just.
We receive it all in escrow and there's a point at which we send it out to everybody, including sending it out to ourselves.
That is correct. So that has not been achieved on here and you'll notice when we put headers on here, we just got this report done today. That's why we, we put it on here. But we felt the need just to provide it that the fund balance in the general fund has not decreased by 5.2 million dollars. The bottom line number is 10.3 million dollars. That's the amount of property taxes that will go into that fund for the next meeting. So it'll show about a 6, $7 million, well, higher than that balance in the general fund. So nothing to be alarmed about. I wanted to point that out first.
Okay, this is just for transparency and accounting. That's what's technically allocated at the moment until the disbursement.
That is correct. We haven't lost $5.3 million in the general fund. It's because 10.3 haven't been allocated there as of yet.
Okay.
So you'll, you'll see that trend continue in future years, but come July of every month, you'll see a full allocation of the property taxes to this report. So I will turn it over to Delance. She'll just quickly go through the report and answer any questions you might have. Again, this will be in your monthly report from now on moving forward. So I just want to thank Jalen for doing this. She's done this and completed the audit for 2023 and the PSC report. So those are going to come to you guys soon too. So she's managed to work more hours than I would hope sometimes because she's 90% of the time here later than I am. But thank you for doing this report as well as everything else.
Kyle, just on your desk, there's a monthly financial report for your review and going forward, this report will be included in the council meeting packet. This report will provide monthly financial information for each department and the fund. This report contains the previous month's revenue and expense activities, year-to-date total, the percentage of the budget, fund balance and the monthly review comparison. Just like Kyle said, please be aware, some of the data is quarterly, like the water fund and the property tax is, wasn't like a reflect in the fund balance until we settle those. If you have any other question or comments, just please let us know.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Jalen?
First sheet's revenue, the next one is expenses, and then the third one is just the balances of, in all the funds, followed by just a monthly comparison of some of the major water sewer and general fund revenues received by the city on a monthly basis.
Right. This is actually modeled after a report that we get in the fire department packets. So I know Joanne was on the fire department board some years ago. I'm on the fire department board now. Every month there is essentially, this is what was budgeted in these line items and this is the expenditure year-to-date. And so that's what we're going to be getting as well, is so we can actually be able to track the budget every month and be able to see like, okay, we allocated, you know, $300,000 to this line item and we're now at June and we've only spent 40,000 of that line item, right? So we're able to see sort of how our spending is going throughout the year.
I'll put in charts and graphs as we get more of a trend in this stuff as we move forward.
Yeah.
Just going to say thank you because I know we've come a long way in our finances and this is good governance and being able to see like where we are in the year versus where we are with budget. It's a, I think it'll help administration a lot just know where they can move things around to still meet all of our needs for residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to applaud also getting the audit done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jalen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so now, before we move on with the consent agenda, we now understand the reason I, I paused there for a moment was that our monthly reports include this now and then from this point forward, every month, we're going to get this kind of a report. So, hey, can I get a motion then to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of our last meeting, putting the monthly reports on file, as well as used vehicle dealers, license applications and the C.M.A.R. report? Okay, move by Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? Okay, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted without objection. Hearing no objections, we will move on to new business. First item tonight is, yes, ma'am.
One comment. I know with workloads, it's a little tough to get things done, but please don't forget to get the May 13th minutes on the agenda next time.
Okay. Right, we did have that, we missed the minutes from last meeting. We'll get those next time. Okay, thank you. Item of new business, 4A is review and possible action on alcohol beverage license applications for the upcoming year. I don't know if the clerk handling this or the city administrator?
Yeah, turn it over to the clerk, please.
Okay.
It's the annual approval of all of the liquor licenses. There's two that are unabated with the fire department. It's Buchanan's and Dr. Dog. Otherwise, there's no issues. There was no background check issues. So the L and J met a week ago and recommended approval by the common council of the licenses.
Okay, so our, our motion, so I just make sure I'm clear on this, is to approve the licenses for renewal, but to, but the two that anyone that, that do not have.
But contingent upon the fire department abating those issues. So if those issues are not abated by midnight, basically 11:59 PM on June 30th, those two businesses will not get their licenses until they are cleared.
Okay. The motion then is to approve the alcohol beverage license applications as presented by the clerk as subject to approval by the North Shore Fire Department for two that have not yet abated concerns. Okay, can I get a motion to that regard, please?
Moved.
Move by Alderman Gelhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the renewals, please say aye.
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 Those motion carries, they are approved. Okay, next is a change order with a qualus and an amount not to exceed $21,150 for sanitary sewer inspections. Mr. Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. So the staff is proposing for a $21,150 change order with a quillis for the contract that was awarded at the June 10th meeting, totaled about $198,000. That contract was about $300,000 or about $250,000 lower than the budget estimate for that, that line item. As a result, this is sort of an item that staff has been holding until there was money free to do it, which we are looking to do 600 manhole inspections for the, the price and a change order on this contract for 21,150. The purchase policy requires that the common council approve all change orders in excess of $10,000.
Question? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the change order?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Doherty, second by Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is an indenture agreement with 6430 North Sunset Lane to permit a fence on a city easement. Mr. Warwick?
So the city was approached by a resident living at 6430 North Sunset. They requested permit to put in a fence. In review of the area, it was determined that there is a 20-foot storm sewer easement in that area. As a result of that, nothing can be constructed within the easement area since the city does have control over that portion of property. There's a 10-foot easement on this property and then a 10-foot on the property to the south, so a total of a 20-foot easement. Since this is a restricted easement, it requires approval of the common council if anything gets placed in that easement. So we have this up for consideration if you want to allow the resident to put a fence within the city easement. The construction and the placement of this fence in this specific circumstance will most likely not interfere with any repairs in the future. But we just wanted to bring to light that, that someone is looking for approval of this.
I believe that the, the sewer line is actually on the other side of the easement, right? It's not right under, directly underneath this fence.
That, the, so the, the storm sewer and Charlie probably knows more about this than I do. The storm sewer is, I believe, more towards the center of the easement and this is more on the northern side of it. The question is, does the council want to approve this policy to allow stuff to be constructed in an easement when we already have it restricted? That's sort of the overarching policy here.
Right, right. I guess the only question I would ask then is, is, is there no other place that the, for example, if it would involve having to take out a whole bunch of trees in order to put this on the person's property, would we consider allowing them to go a couple of feet into the easement in order to be able to construct the fence in order to save a whole bunch of trees? You know, are there light posts there? Are there other impediments to being able to build on the property or at the property line as opposed to building in the easement?
I'll turn it over to Charlie. He may be able to answer that a little better. He looked at this in more detail.
I guess the understanding is the, the, not the guess, but the easement goes from the southern property line 10 feet into the property, which essentially puts it on the southern edge of the garage of the structure. So there is no other place on the south side of the property to put the fence out there than in the easement.
Okay, so it's still on the person's property. It's just.
Correct. Yes, the easement is essentially property line 10 feet in, which takes it to, it, it touches the southern end of the, of the structure.
And the storm sewer.
The storm is, I understand, a 24-inch storm sewer and it is almost right on the property line. So it would not be, and looking through the plans, it's, it's the city's understanding that the proposed fence would be a foot south of the structure and then continue to the east in the, in the easement, so not over proper of the storm sewer.
Okay, so basically if we ever had to do work on the storm sewer line, we wouldn't be needing to touch this person's fence. Most likely.
I hope not.
Okay.
And in, in the event that does happen, the resident would be responsible for the removal cost and be responsible for replacing it if it came to that.
Okay.
In the agreement.
Okay, and that's in the.
Charlie, do you see any reason not to do this?
It, it's not over the storm sewer, like the mayor, the mayor asked. I mean, I don't think if anything would have to be done in the future. I think, I think as, as Administrator Warwick said, I mean, it's not our policy to approve that. So I mean, that's why it's going to the council. But like I said, it's not over the storm sewer structure. We just don't want to hook it on future councils or future staff that if something should arise or it needs to be removed, that they're now bound by this structure being in the city's easement.
We're not changing an ordinance here. We're essentially making an exception this time because the circumstances permit that kind of an exception.
It's the understanding.
Okay. Alderman Gelhard?
Yes, and Mr. Flanagan, the homeowner, is here, present at the council chambers. I had an extensive discussion with him and I explained to him that if it were the case that the city needed to come in and service this utility and perhaps need to take some of the fence out, he's assuming the risk of that. And he said he's, you know, perfectly willing to do that and absorb the cost of having to restore a fence if that were the case. And so with that, knowing that he's, he understands the risks here and that he would be absorbing the cost of any type of future work if we needed to do it, I, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderwoman Shaw?
Out of curiosity, if this is approved, does this then go to? Out of curiosity, if this is approved, does this then go to the plan formerly known as a plan commission? For the park arc reviews because it is a structure going up?
No, it's a fence that doesn't require that. So the, the-
Want to make sure-
Yeah, city staff-
Doing hurdles already.
Yeah, I mean, city staff is allowed to approve permits for fences that are compliant with the fence code. And this one, I, from my understanding in all respects, is, you know, six feet or below and a board on board wood fence that meets all the city's requirements. So staff would issue the permit, but in order to do that, you have to approve the placement in an easement. It is still on his property.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Vukovich. So Alderwoman Vukovich. Yeah.
I don't have a horse in this race one way or the other. I just want to bring to attention if this particular situation is for anyone else in the city, are we going to allow them to do it? Where it's farther enough that it's not going to hit, you know, it's not going to interfere with the work. I just, if other people want to do this, I don't want to hear the, the issue where we let one person but not other people, if these circumstances are happening, maybe it is a, a time where we say, you know, you can have a fence as long as it's in here. If you do do a fence, the easement, then, you know, you have to take responsibility. But I think it has to be, because I just, I have this thing. I don't mind that he doesn't have it and especially since it's not in the, the area where we might have to have some issues with it. But if that is the same case for his neighbor or the neighbor after that, or, you know, whatever else, then all of a sudden, we're going to have fences that were not necessarily, is not going to be in the, the easement or in the area, but we're going to have a bunch of them and we can't say no to somebody else because we said yes to him in the exact same situation. That's the only thing. I mean, I don't, I don't really care, but I just want to make precedent.
Sure, and, and I understand what you're, you're concerned about precedent. That's why I asked some of the questions I did. My, my preference would be to just keep the ordinance as it is written. And if we ever had a future request like this, it would be, we would have to examine the circumstances and see if it qualified. In this particular case, the reason that I personally don't have a concern is because it's not directly over the storm sewer. It's what, about ten feet away, nine feet away? And they're building, he's still building the fence on his property. He's not asking to go into like a city right of way or something like that. So I, that's why I don't, as I say, we keep the ordinance in place and then if there's a future request like this, we would take it on a case by case basis.
And I understand, but there is case by case base, back same, look at this. And either, I think we, we might have to have this issue later on, but I'm just putting it in. Don't care. I think if he wants a fence, he should have a fence. But it's just that if we're going to do that, we really remember why we're doing it. Because we've had other times where things from ten, five years, ten years from before where they did something and then all of a sudden it's an issue. So I just want to make it clear that on the record, we're saying it's a case by case basis. This is an unusual circumstance. He has plenty of room to put it so that the city can still work. And that is the main reason why we're, we're, you know, we may allow this to happen. And then other people who come will look at it as a case by case, but those are the criteria or that is the stipulation that we're looking at when we say yes or no.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yep, Alderman Schmelzling?
Real quick, I know we have the process for other ordinance differences with zoning like the Board of Appeals. I, I don't know if that's something that maybe we should consider for things like this in the future, just something to think about. But as far as this, I think we've done a great job, a soft in the detailed notes that not to dig lower than four feet for the footings. So, um, you know, we're not going to hit anything. So I have, I see no issue with this being case by case at the council if that's the, the proper process. But again, if, if there's a, a way to bundle these sort of things into that, then there's a, an easier process to get them approved, then I'm fine with that as well.
And the, the issue with the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals could make an agreement like this on behalf of the city, would still have to come to us even if they approved it. They can give variances on like heights or things like that, but they can't, they, they can't make an agreement on behalf of the city. That's, those of us who stood for election have to do.
Fair enough. Okay. Well, then, yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly content with this. I think case by case basis is why we're here for these sort of situations.
Yeah, that is correct. If I could just make one final comment is that, yeah, this would have to be handled on a case by case basis depending on where the utilities are, where the fence is. The big question will come in if the person to the south wants to put a fence up too. You know, who, who, do both of them get approved? And that's why we brought this because it's a total policy decision by the council.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard?
I, I would make a motion that, that we permit this to go forward at sixty-four thirty North Sunset Lane.
Moving the-
I second it.
Okay, moved by Gelhard, seconded by Doherty. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Shaw?
I would like to amend that motion by including, this is a, is a non precedent setting decision on a one-time basis and this should be included on the property files.
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Doherty, would you accept that? Since you seconded, okay. So now the motion is to approve the indenture agreement. Would you read that language one more time?
To be included is, is a one-time non precedent setting decision based on not in, including the information on the property records as a case by case basis. Not exact, but close.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded, a motion to approve, and basically it's non precedent setting, one, one-time decision. So, okay. Yes, Alderwoman? You need to speak into the microphone.
Isn't a decision a, a precedent, no matter if it's a first time or second time? So I, I mean, I, I get what you're trying to protect, but I don't, I don't necessarily know. It's still a precedent. Even though we say non precedent and we can say it's still, but they did it.
Well, by, by wording the, the motion that way, what it would mean is if somebody were to later come in and they had similar circumstances, but not quite, and then they wanted to sue us, we have a motion on, on saying that we made a one-time exception. This isn't a precedent. That's why we include the language. Like really smart decision actually to add that in there. So, yeah, no, I totally understand the question though. Yeah. Yeah.
And very seldom are all circumstances exactly the same. So I, I don't see this as being an issue, but I'm fine with Joanne's amendment.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know? Motion carries. Okay, next is a review and possible action on delegating the responsibility for the common council public hearing on a zoning text amendment. And I'm going to actually just, and then also I think it's referring to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to, to Carl.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So we have a, a proposed amendment to the zoning code that's, that's included here for the waiver of the common council public hearing. There's been a public hearing scheduled for this with the plan commission for the July ninth regular meeting. It has been moved from July second to ninth because of the special election on, on, on July second. So this, this ordinance proposal does a number of things. Right now in the city, drive-throughs are a prohibited use. So this ordinance would allow drive-throughs as a permitted use in various B districts where restaurants are permitted and only where restaurants are permitted and those subsections of B one are listed there in the table.
It's between Green Tree and Hampton, if I'm not mistaken, on Port Washington Road only, where we have approved a number of, I can think of three drive-throughs that have been approved. All of them had to be rezoned as planned development districts because we don't permit them in any of the B districts. And so Carl and I were talking and he said, you know, it seems easier to just say, well, permit them in B districts, but only on Port Washington Road between Green Tree and Hampton, which is where we've approved them anyway, and not have to go through the rezoning of planned development districts for drive-throughs. So they won't be permitted anywhere else in the city, just where we've already been permitting them for the last few years and doing them through a rezoning process. So, yeah, that was, did you anything, anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was just going to state there's a number of performance standards also in the ordinance about traffic backups, lighting, signage, sound, all of that stuff to that and, and sort of queuing areas that all the businesses who have a, a drive-through possible on Port Washington Road would have to comply with. Another part of this ordinance that I will just bring up, this didn't change anything, but, but as part of this review, Nathan and I talked about this, that typically when you see uses, you see use tables. So as part of this, we had all of these B districts with all the uses sort of listed out there. What we've done in here is created a use table for all the zoning districts listed here and put the zoning district and then the use, and then if it was permitted and X went by it, just to make it easier and more condensed to read. So we're not changing all of these use tables every time we do that. So it didn't change anything substantially of, of what is a permitted use. It just put it all in one table in one area.
All right. So the motion here would be to refer this to Planning and Architecture Review Commission and to waive a second hearing that would be normally held at the common council. So basically the Planning and Architecture Review Commission will get this. They will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation back to us. We won't hold a second public hearing. So is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Move by Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. Alderwoman Vukovich. Yeah, in the microphone.
So if this goes the way it's supposed, it will not come back to us for approval?
It'll still come back to us for approval. We just won't hold a second public hearing for it.
Okay, and this came, so this goes to, I'm trying to find the order of, of, thank you. So it goes to them, technically it goes to them first and then it comes back to us? Or did it start with us and I missed it somewhere and then?
Goes to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. They will hold a public hearing and they will make a recommendation back to the council. It'll come back to us and then we will either approve or deny based on the recommendation from the Planning and Architecture Review Commission. What we've noticed on a lot of these items in the last probably two years is there are a number of items where we're required to hold two public hearings. Nobody shows up at the P A R C and nobody shows up here. And so we started, Carl and I had a conversation about why don't we, at least for the next couple of referrals to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission, consider waiving the second public hearing for the common council just to save us the time of holding a public hearing that nobody shows up to. We'll see what happens with this one. We can see if this is a pattern where we want to continue or if it's an issue that's really, really, you know, we think public is going to show up for, we do hold the public hearings for.
I'll just wait. I'll wait until-
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Yeah, Alderman Gelhard?
I mean, it, to the extent that i- if, if we're saying, oh, you know, nobody shows up for the public hearing at the common council, it doesn't take any time. But we at least give the, the public the opportunity to have some input on something. I mean, everyone knows when the common council meetings are. They don't necessarily know when the CDA meetings are. So it seems to me that, you know, I don't have any problem having a, a second public hearing at the common council, just to give people the opportunity to be heard on something. And, and, and is the idea that we would waive the public hearing every time somebody wants to do a, a drive-through?
No, no, no. We've just waived the public hearing on this change to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And I know that when it comes to drive-throughs, I mean, we did this with Alderman Vukovich and when Chick-fil-A wanted to come in and they were going to set up a drive-through and, uh, drive-through near her house, there were a lot of concerns. And so I think that we definitely want to keep that in mind going forward for any type of, you know, drive-through arrangements. So.
Yeah. Yeah, Alderwoman Shaw?
First question is, how does this pertain to the master plan?
Well, we have only permitted drive-throughs along Port Washington Road and the master plan doesn't speak to drive-throughs at all. But the master plan, but our zoning ordinance is due. At some point in the nineties, we banned drive-throughs unless you, they already were existing. But yet we have approved at least three in the time that I have been mayor that have had to go through a lengthy, it takes three or four months to do a planned development district because we have to get it. We have to send it to the P A R C. Then a month later, they have to hold a hearing. Then they send it back to us. And then a month after that, we have to hold a hearing. All this really does by waiving the second hearing and, and, and moving it in, by changing the, the zoning and then waiving a second hearing is just move the approval of this ordinance change through more quickly. But they still have to be fully vetted by the Planning and Architecture Review Commission if somebody wants to propose a drive-through. It can only be on one of those parcels, which means they'd be redeveloping because everything is already developed. And if they wanted to add one, they'd have to go through the same traffic study and the same, the same rigor as before.
And the other comment I have is, so by not having a second public hearing, you're, you're eliminating the public's right that couldn't make their first meeting, their opportunity to speak on behalf of what are the situation is. So you're eliminating someone else to speak. Do their right for something like this for drive-throughs if they have an issue or anything along Port Washington Road as you're talking.
So I'm going to ask the city attorney question here. If we were to waive our second hearing, send this to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission, they hold a public hearing and all of a sudden there's all these people that show up. And then they refer it back to the common council. Could we bring it back and decide we do want to hold a hearing and go ahead and re, and I guess rescind the waiver of the second hearing and plan one for a month later?
Well, there we go. This body always has a discretion to give more, to receive more public feedback and have a hearing. I, I thought that the, let's see, the, the language of the actuals or the actual proposed was to actually delegate the responsibility for the required hearing back to the, the, this, this, this committee. So it's not really usurping the requirement to have a hearing. It's just delegating it pursuant to statute back to this other body.
The way, I believe the way our ordinances are written right now on zoning changes, there's a required public hearing at the Planning and Architecture Review Commission that refers it back to us. And then there's a required hearing that we have to have once we receive it back. But we have the ability to waive it. The Planning and Architecture Review Commission does not have the ability to waive it.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's under Article N, changes and amendments to the zoning code that I'm looking at here under thirteen point one point one eight two. So really, what they're, what the common council is doing is essentially just saying that the hearing that's required under the ordinance is going to be held at this other municipal body as opposed to here. So it's still, there's still a public hearing taking place. It's just going to be somewhere else. That's all.
And when they refer it back to us, if we get it back and we decide we want to have a hearing, then we just direct staff to hold a hearing for a month later and post it publicly?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. I mean-
Does that satisfy your concern, Alderman Gelhard?
I, I still think that, I still have some concerns that, that, you know, the public would not have the, the input simply because they might not be aware of, you know, this other meeting, but they're, you know, fairly aware of, you know, when we have the, the common council meetings. So that's, that's what my concern is that they wouldn't have that chance to come forward, having missed the, the CDA meeting.
I believe the staff already went ahead and noticed for the public hearing at the planning and architecture, next planning and architecture review commission meeting. Would there be a time to go ahead and notice for it to come back to the common council?
Yeah, I could, I could talk to the clerk tomorrow about that.
Because it wasn't coming back to us until our second meeting in July anyway.
Yeah, the, the public hearing is scheduled for July ninth at the, the Plan and Architecture Review Commission. You could certainly hold a public hearing and then if you wanted to adopt it on July twenty-second or hold the public hearing and then adopt it at the first meeting in August.
Okay. Mayor?
Well, just was going to, going to reference back to thirteen point one point one eight two. The PC technically doesn't have to have a, a, a public hearing. It may, but it does, it's not required to. So that's what you were alluding to. Essentially, there used to be two, there used to be two public hearings. So the common council has to have a hearing, but u- under the statutes and all the applicable case law, it has the ability to delegate and the applicable statutes, it absolutely one hundred percent has the ability to delegate the responsibility for holding that hearing back to the PC. So that's, that's really what you're doing. You're saying the PC is going to have the one official public hearing that's required under our ordinances. And everybody that has any interest in this, they're, you know, the notice is going to go out. There's going to be the, the proper notice under chapter nine eighty-five. It's going to be put out into the public and somebody can see, hey, they're going to be talking about, you know, uh, drive-throughs in, uh, along this corridor. And if they want to weigh in, there's their opportunity to do so. That information will be bundled up into a nice little neat package by whatever feedback they get there and it'll be fed back to the full council and then you'll have that information when you make your decision. But if you think, yeah, this is a big one. There's a lot of people that showed up. We want to have another one. There's nothing holding you back from having another hearing.
Oh, I guess the recommendation from staff that was put before us was to refer this to the Planning and Architecture Review Commission and delegate the responsibility for the public hearing there. It sounds probably what I'm hearing from a number of- It sounds really what I'm hearing from a number of folks in the common council. They don't want to waive the second hearing. So, um, I would say probably a proper motion that would be to refer this to the planning and architecture review commission and direct staff to go ahead and make a notice for a month from now for the second public hearing at the planning, at the common council. Yes.
I don't necessarily think that is what your statement is true. I mean, I was more concerned about the, the actual ordinance, not the thing. So I, I, I wouldn't assume quite yet because I don't.
Other people saying that is what I.
I mean, but I've heard two and some people are, you know, concerned, but they haven't said yes or no. I haven't heard anything.
Yeah. Well, I get what you're saying about the, this is a big change for us. Um, and so what I've heard from Alderman Galhard and, and others is it might be a good idea to go ahead and have the two public hearings on this one. This may not have been the right one to say, we'll waive a public hearing. Maybe the last one we did, this may have been a really good one to do that. So, um, and I, I do understand the concerns because most of them are in your district. There's a few in Alderman Galhard's district, but most of the drive-throughs are in your district. So. All right. Um, so could we get a motion then to refer this to the planning and architecture review commission? And to direct staff to go ahead and schedule the public hearing for the common council meeting, after the planning and architecture review commission?
So moved.
Move Alderman Galhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. One opposed. Vote a five to one. Uh, so sent on to the planning and architecture review commission and then we'll have a hearing at our second meeting in July. All right. Next action. Actually, we've got several, uh, that are all pretty much the same. Why don't we just go and, well, you want to just talk about all three of these? We've got three resolutions that have to do with constructing a sidewalk in a county right of way.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Yeah. So the first item on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the construction of a public sidewalk um, on Port Road near, um, Calumet. This is the result of a development agreement for the new BP gas station that is built in that area. Um, the development agreement requires the developer to install a sidewalk. Uh, the sidewalk will be in the county right of way. And as a result of that, um, the county requires the city to pass a resolution for maintenance of it. Uh, it requires the developer to put the sidewalk in and maintain responsibility for ownership and maintenance of that sidewalk moving forward. Um, the other two resolutions on the agenda are for the construction of a public sidewalk on North Port Washington Road on the east and west side. On the west side from Good Hope South to the Hampton Inn, and then on the east side from Sugar Lane to the existing sidewalk, which is just north of Green Tree. Um, those two sidewalks were approved as part of the city's ARPA fund use for construction and, um, uh, of bike paths. The other resolution is for the, um, construction of, uh, multi-use path on Good Hope Road between the Parkway and Green Tree. I'm sorry, and Green Bay, not Green Tree. Um, and that also requires a resolution, a separate one to be, um, executed by the city because those are two separate projects. Both of those were included in the ARPA fund and the connection of some of the gaps that are here in the city. Um, there is a little memo in here about, you know, future construction in those areas. Um, and the ability to have them funded at a 20% if and when those constructions ever happen. So we wanted to bring that to the council's attention, um, that, well, if you put these in and the road is reconstructed and the sidewalks are removed or something's happening, the, the county through the, um, the grant program is required to replace them, um, both the sidewalk and the Good Hope Road, um, um, multi-use path. If we don't put them in and those roads are reconstructed, there's the possibility to get them for 20%. If and when that occurs, we're talking five to 15 years from now for either one of those that could occur.
That's a big if, assuming the county.
Yeah, they, they plan to re-ho, re, re, reconstruct Good Hope from forty-one to forty-three, beginning in the next five years, probably four to five years worth of staging on that project on, on the best of days.
As, as much as I, uh, appreciate the folks who serve in the county board and the county executive's office, I'll believe that when I see it because that is a massive project that I don't know where the county is getting the money to pay for that. So even with federal help, it's still going to be a massive project. So.
Yeah. Both of these projects are, are pretty expensive and forty-one to forty-three is probably in excess of.
About eight miles or so?
Yeah. But I think it was five miles that I measured it at. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a long way.
Yeah.
And it's in bad shape.
It is. All right. So we have three separate resolution. They can actually be taken and blocked because they're basically all the same thing. They're just resolutions allowing for the construction of, um, sidewalks inside of Milwaukee County rights of way. So can I get a motion to adopt the three resolutions, please?
Can we do a separate motion for each one of these? The county will require that to be in the minutes.
Really?
Yes.
Of course they will.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Can we get a motion to adopt the first resolution, which is for the, uh, seventy-five seventy-five North Port Washington property where there is a convenience store being built?
I'll move.
Okay. Move Alderman Galhard. Is there a second? Second, Alderman Vukovich. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries. Next one is, uh, in a motion to approve the resolution for the construction of the sidewalk in the right of way on North Port Washington Road, south of Good Hope.
Moved.
Move by Alderman Bailey, second of Alderman Vukovich. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries. And the third and final resolution can get a motion to adopt the resolution for the construction of a sidewalk in the Milwaukee County right of way on West Good Hope Road from Milwaukee River Parkway to Green Bay Avenue. Move Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
O's no? Motion carries. Finally, commission committee, board and staff reports. I just have two quick things. I'll do the mayor first this time. This Friday, June twenty-eighth is the kickoff of our seventy-fifth anniversary. It will be held right here in front of the town hall. Glendale Women's Club will be opening the town hall for tours after about a fifteen minute, uh, short presentation, talking about the history of, uh, of this particular time and why this date was chosen to kick off our seventy-fifth. Also just a reminder of everybody, we don't meet again till after the fourth of July. But we do line up for the parade, wear your walking shoes, and let's hope it's not a ninety degree day. That concludes my report. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So the first thing I'll say is that we have our first live at the oasis this Wednesday. Uh, Love Monkeys will be performing and Alderwoman Shaw will be doing all of the introductions. So I would like to thank her for her effort in that and also doing the salute to veterans, which, um, immediately precedes the live at the oasis. Uh, a couple of clerks things. And if Megan wants to, um, wrap on these, it's the open book was held today for people to get more information on their property tax assessment. I know we had a full lobby most of the day today. As a result of that, it went from noon to four. Um, and then they're looking for an opportunity to hold another one, um, with a public notice. So if anyone has any further questions about their property tax assessments, please check the city's information. There might be another opportunity for open book before board of review. Um, and the clerk's office right now is preparing for three upcoming elections, including one next week.
Thank you, city attorney.
No news is good news. Nothing tonight.
Have it changed the, the election laws on us in the last 24 hours?
Not in the last 24 hours at least. We're holding our fingers and we're crossing our fingers.
Madam clerk?
Okay. So there's three elections in six weeks. The first one is next week, uh, Tuesday. And then, um, starting tomorrow, we're prepping the ballots for the August election. Um, and then July eighth, the ballots go out for the July thirtieth election. So there's a lot of crossover between people's ballots. Who get their ballots mailed to them. In-person absentee for the July second election goes through this Friday. And, um, I know Alderman Schmelzling has been a poll worker with us several times, but I haven't seen anybody else do it. So I'm always happy to have other alder people sign up to be a poll worker. So if you're interested, please let me know.
None of us are on the ballot. So.
So you're free to be a poll worker. So, um, that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, Captain Trader, anything from the police department?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, let the chief know that you, you executed your duties beautifully. So, all right. Number one. Okay. Number two, Mr. Doherty.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Number three?
Nothing this evening.
Number four?
Nothing this evening.
Five. I might steal a little bit of my neighbor's thunder, but we do have, as you said, the fourth of July coming up and we still need lots of volunteers. I, uh, did a little mail blast to everyone who'd volunteered over the last few years. So, uh, if you go to, uh, glendalefourthofjuly.com, click on the volunteer, then click on volunteer day of, um, you can sign up that way. Or there's really long URL from signup genius. I don't know that off the top of my head. But yes, it's, it's definitely necessary. We'll be doing ice cream sales, beer sales, all the setup, you know, everything else that we do every year. And it's, uh, it does always takes a village or as I like to say, a city to do it. So thank you.
For six?
Our reports and Carl took care of it.
All right. Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So the Alderwoman Vukovich, so she can get to her daughter's birthday. Uh, second of Alderwoman Shaw, all those in favor of adjourning, aye?
Aye.
O's no? We stand adjourned.
But I just.
Oh, they got it.
Like you had.
Order.
Those stuff.
Tell them to take care of it. But again, order them this morning and tell them to take care of it. Also.